Okay, this is our Northwood School Board meeting for November 15th. We'll start with a roll call. I'm Brian Winslow, I'm here.
David.
Amy Hanneman.
Keith McGuigan and Shane Wells are absent. And we're going to turn things over to Brianna to lead us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then an update from Co Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I have a few events that are happening in November and December for Co Brown. And so, the first thing is the Secure Campus Drill. We did that today. So, that was during the school day, during the first period, which was our double block. And they are having a meeting tonight about the security of the school, I believe. And the next thing is something that's happening tomorrow. The class of 2020 is having a teacher pull-up lunch. And that's happening tomorrow after school. And for Shayla Ashley's senior project, she is doing a diversity book club. And she's doing that on November 17th, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The peer helpers have a few things that they're doing from November to December. They're doing an angel-giving tree, which is a tree that you can take an ornament off of, and you can get a present for a child. And you bring it to guidance, wrapped for the child. And the peer helpers are also doing holiday candy grams. And both of these events start at the end of November and go till mid-December. The Winter Arts Festival is also being prepared for, which is coming up pretty soon. There are going to be performances from the band, the chorus, the women's choir, and there's going to be a theatrical performance, as well as a art display for Scholastic Art Awards. And SOPA, the Supporters of the Performing Arts, will be set up to educate some people that come about what they do. The CBNA Talent Show is happening on December 7th. And they are currently encouraging us to sign up for the show. And some teachers are being encouraged to sign up, too. Student-directed one-act plays are also being prepared for. They are in January, but they are starting now. They had auditions yesterday. And so, the student-directed one-acts are basically students' senior projects, if they wish it to be. And they direct their own show. And they have underclassmen help them with it. And there is a film competition that was started today. And that is a competition where they provide you with footage, and they want students to put together to create a promotional video for Co Brown. The boys varsity soccer made it to their championship game. They did not win, but we were all very excited that they got there. And they are currently starting winter sports. And that is all the events that are happening in the next few months.
Great. Wow.
Any questions?
What was the score of the soccer game?
Yeah.
You lost.
Not sure.
He does this to me, too.
They lost by one goal.
Yes. I'm picking on you.
He asked me where a light switch was.
Yeah.
We were at Co Brown last night for a presentation, and it's impressive how many student activities they have beyond the curricular activities. So, that's great to hear.
It's not just sports.
Right.
Right.
Something for everybody.
And lots.
And then I told them about that. And then I also told them about the cinnamon rolls in the cafeteria.
Which, now I want one.
Have you had one of those?
Yeah. I have Whoopee pies, too.
I know.
Oh, no.
No, they're fine.
Well, we should have our meetings there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Go and get some rest. You might get a little more rest than you expected.
I apologize.
Oh, yeah, you know how I feel about that. Brianna, thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
I think, do you have bills in Manifest?
We worked on them.
It's a Co Brown report, sent it. Are any adjustments to the agenda?
I just have a couple of things to add, but I think we can do that under my superintendent's point of report without having to do that.
Okay.
Basically, I have an addendum to the personnel report, and I think we need to talk about a special meeting of two things.
Okay.
A real adjustment.
And then we have a need for a non-public session under A3.
No, security, so...
Do we have a timeframe so we can let the public know how long it will be?
Top hour, Mr. Solomon?
Yeah.
The most?
Okay.
So, you're going to go under RSA 91832I. 2I, and we'll roll call in. So, Brian Winslow, do I have to make a motion for that?
Someone needs to make a motion.
Make a motion to vote it non-public.
Second.
A roll call in, yes.
Yes, Dave.
Amy, yes.
So, now go to opening public comment.
A party of one?
Anything tonight, Jared? Come on, make something up!
Okay, then we're going to move to accept the consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda for you.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
No.
All right, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda as written?
Aye.
Three, nothing.
Three, nothing. And we'll move on to our Business Administrator's report.
Sorry, Business Administrator right now.
Okay, take care.
Sorry, just being the host, too. So, actually, the only thing we have for the Business Administrator is the budget. We have that under old business. So, we can skip that section. Or I can do budget now, it's up to you.
Um, well, I think maybe we'll go to the Principal's report and then spend more time on the budget after.
Sorry about that.
Everybody for us?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. We'll start on page 16. So, we had an author come visit in third grade, Sean. I do not pronounce his name very well. Guida?
Godera.
Godera, thank you. So, he did Ethan the Raindrop, which was one of his books. He self-published it. It was about a raindrop that kind of has its own little excursion. The students loved it. They absolutely loved it. He was a, he was kind of a quieter guy, but he was very engaging. I got one quote from a student there that I'm going to read. He said to Sean that he was so, he was, this has inspired him so much, he was going to go home and write a story immediately.
Oh, no.
I think he did, actually. The kids are great. There is a copy in Ms. Garcia's room of the book, so it was really fascinating. The kids had some really great questions. Ms. Young was in there as well, and we both were kind of, well, struck by how deep their questions were about, you know, the writing process, how long it took, the steps to do it, how many revisions. I mean, these are the questions that were coming out of them. So, it was a, it was a great visit. It was great to have them. Then we have sports awards on November 7th. It was packed. There was a packed crowd there. A lot of families in there. A lot of kids showed up. As you know, it was a great year for both soccer and cross-country. The girls made it to the finals. Unfortunately, they did not win. The boys lost in PKs, penalty shootout. So, they made the semifinals. It was a good year for them. Cross-country was a, not as many students ran this year as years prior, but the ones that ran still represented Northwood very well. We also had 30 student athletes that received Academic All-Stars. And a big thank you to Mrs. Billcliff. We had a significant amount of rainy days, so it was really tricky to get in practices and games. So, just tipping our hat to her, considering how much maneuvering she had to to get the games in and everything. So, that was my part.
Next, we have a NEASC update. So, as you know, George Edwards had been here to speak with the faculty on October 5th, and sort of provided an overview of what the self-study process looks like. We then formed self-study committees. Each faculty member ranked their preferences of the seven standards to work on, one, two, and three. And then we went through and assigned each faculty member to a committee. Everybody got at least their third choice. So, those committees have been created. There is a building leadership team member assigned to each committee who will oversee the work. We have not actually started. We were slated to start at our November faculty meeting, but that, we ran long on other topics. So, we're planning on starting this work on November 19th. And the first step will just be orienting faculty members to the work, addressing any questions and concerns. And then we'll continue to work on the self-study process, which is really finding evidence of the work that we've done and the narrative that we provide in the application. So, artifacts, student work, a copy of the report card, examples of curriculum documents, gathering all of that. We upload it into a portal, so we're not actually making physical copies of it. Everything's digital. And then we'll continue that work over the course of this year, next year, and then we're anticipating that we'll have a visit from NEASC to confirm all of that evidence and determine the accreditation status in the spring of 2020. And then our almost final item, Mrs. Labrie actually has two requests. One is included in our written report, and then the other one just came in the other day, so I have a copy of an email for you. So, the first thing she's requesting is she herself would like to make a bi-weekly donation to the eighth-grade class. And her letter is included in the packet. I believe she wants to donate $30 every other week for a total of $510. So, we are looking for your approval to accept that donation to the eighth-grade class for the purpose of their trip. And then separately from that is a fundraiser, which had historically been handled by the PTA, but the PTA is not planning to do it this year, and so asked the co-advisors for eighth grade if they would like to take it over. And that's the Scripps gift card fundraiser. So, essentially, people can go online, purchase gift cards through this program right before Christmas, and a portion of the proceeds come back to the school for the purpose of the eighth-grade trip. So, we are looking for approval for those two items.
First one, which was in our packet, was Mrs. Labrie donating $30 every other week?
Yes.
All right, did she want to just donate that every other week, or did she just want to give one final total at the end of the...
My understanding is she wants to do the $30 every other week, but for the purposes of board approval, I needed a total of...
So, you don't want to have to come every two weeks and approve getting $30?
Yes.
Okay. But with nothing to do with payroll, this is her generous donation, but so, okay, there's no other bookwork involved for our bookkeepers or anything. So, okay, good. I'll make a motion to approve, well, let me see what the next approach was. I think we can do everything at once, right? Instead of having two different proposals.
I think we could.
All right. Make a motion to accept the proposals from the principal for donations to the eighth grade, for Mrs. Labrie, for the eighth grade trips. And then the second one is a fundraiser for, the eighth grade will have a fundraiser. The gift cards.
Second.
Any other conversation? Thank you to Mrs. Labrie, that's very kind. All right, all in favor?
All right.
And that is all we have for you, unless you have any questions or comments?
All set. Okay, to our Curriculum Director's report.
Good evening. School has been very focused on the implementation of the standards-based report card. Teachers have received support and professional development, both during after-school sessions and during the teacher workshop day November 2nd. This has been a significant change for our teachers, so there has been lots of discussion. Teachers have been sharing their frustrations regarding the transition, which has been helpful, so that way we could find additional ways to support them. And we will be working on continuing to develop our understanding of standards-based grading for the remainder of the year. Parent information sessions regarding the report card were offered on Thursday, October 11th, at 6:30 in the evening, as well as Friday, October 12th, at 8:30, to provide parents with different opportunities based on their schedules to at least become informed about the report card. We emailed the brochure, and parents received a hard copy during conferences. Mr. Alfred was very helpful when, he definitely assisted me in terms of editing and formatting and that. The brochure said that second pair of eyes was definitely appreciated. I was available on November 9th to answer parent questions in person. And I have had a couple of questions by emails, so I've been talking to a few parents or guardians. PLC meetings have begun, and I'm working with Ms. Young, Mr. Alfred, and teachers with the goal of sharing best practices in order to increase student achievement. Teachers are selecting and trying various performance tasks as a common assessment, so that way we can begin looking at data and looking at the results of instruction to determine what best practices are here. It's also good to have an alternative assessment to a paper and pencil test. So, a lot of times when you have students actually engage in an activity or working on a project as part of a performance task, they will often do better than they would with a paper and pencil test, and that's especially true of students who are special education students. So, that's work that's definitely meaningful for the school. A mentoring meeting was held on November 8th here in Northwood. And again, we're continuing to make sure that the new faculty integrate into the Northwood community, so that way they can be successful. And then, in addition to that, the board did request historic information on how students have been performing on state assessments. Beginning on page 19, I've included graphs, first for reading, starting with the current fourth graders. And since they're in fourth grade, the only results that we have are when they were in third grade. And then I went to do, next is the current fifth grades, so we have their third and fourth grade data, and so on. So, we can see how students have been doing in reading, followed by how they've been doing in math. One of the things that struck me as I was analyzing these graphs is that there are years when students, a particular group might do very well relative to the state, and then there's a year when a particular group might not do as well to the state, so, when compared to the state. So, that kind of indicates that maybe the curriculum hasn't necessarily been well-aligned to the state standards, or that best practices have been in place in some classrooms, but not others, or that there's been a lack of vertical alignment between the grades. So, we're hoping that in the future, as time goes on, the data becomes more consistent, and hopefully consistent above the state standard, the state average. So, we're looking for that as an indicator that the work that we are doing is helping our students achieve more. Questions? I know that was a lot, very quickly.
No, thank you, because I think I was one of the ones that asked for, if you have anything like this.
Okay.
And, yeah, it's kind of, when you look at it and you see, they're in seventh grade, they all did fantastic, and then in eighth grade, I'm just, I don't know. And there's a big drop or a bigger increase or something. So, naturally, you're happy for an increase, but you're wondering, wow, how did they all of a sudden can't read in the eighth grade versus seventh? So, that would take us time, I would imagine, to figure that out, or is it almost normal sometimes when kids go from when they're like 12 years old to 13 years old, or different things?
Well, for the, if we're looking at math or reading for the current eighth grade, you also have to remember that this past year, the assessments changed quite a bit. And we do know that some of our students, you know, they did have some exposure, but it's also a matter of the teachers getting used to, how is the assessment being given? How do I teach my students not only the content and the skills that I want them to have, but also how do I incorporate maybe some test-taking strategies, especially in the format of the exam has changed?
So, every year now, with taking the same test, you'll get a better idea as the years go forward?
Right, we're hoping that it remains consistent. Just like if you look at the eighth grade, whether for math or reading, when those students were in the third grade, the state assessment was the kneecap exam.
Yeah.
So, the exams have changed now a couple times.
Yeah, for that group in particular, we've got, what is it, five years and three different tests?
Right.
So, that's, I mean, that makes it kind of challenging. You know, hopefully, the state will stick with one thing for long enough, at least, so we can get a cohort.
Very optimistic of you.
I know, yeah.
Wishful thinking.
Hasn't been proven so far by history.
Well, thank you for providing us, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Do you have any state music test?
No, they do not. I mean, not that I've ever administered.
No, but you do have a bill in the House for a state civics test right now, so...
Interesting.
Civics, history, I don't think I ever had, what would they call it? Called it history when I was a kid?
Government.
Government. Yeah, okay. All these new terms will be...
Do you have any other questions for our Curriculum Director? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're moving on to policies. Okay, so we have a first reading for policy IHAK, and this is going to start on page 24, and then a second reading for a number of policies.
Motion to approve policy IHAK for first reading, Character and Citizenship Education. I don't think we had anything on that.
Any conversation on policy IHAK?
Nope.
No.
All right. All in favor of moving to second reading?
Unanimous. Motion to accept policy code ABD, Drug-Free Workplace and Drug-Free Schools, GADA, Employment References and Verification, JICI, Prohibiting Weapons on School Property, and JJJ, Access to Public School Programs by Non-Public Charter School and Home Educated Students, to move on for a second reading?
Second?
I don't move. No, that is the second reading, to move on to the final approval.
To adopt the poll.
Yep, adopt the policy.
Okay. Any conversation on...
Second?
Yeah.
Take a second to read through, I guess?
Number 7, I can't remember anything anyways. That's fine. Yeah. Remember from the first time we checked.
Okay. Well, are we all in favor? All in favor? Unanimous? Bam. Okay, and we're ready to move on to our Superintendent's report.
Personnel report on page 38, and then I have a... Addendum. These are all stipended positions, correct?
Sorry, I'm trying to take notes.
I got it, believe me.
It looks like it.
Yes.
All right, so since I have three districts that do things three different ways, are these informational for Northwood?
I believe stipends are informational, yeah.
All right. And then I just passed you out in an attempt to hire. So, why don't we deal with the personnel report in the packet, and then we'll do it the second one? Okay, how's that work?
Sure.
Well, not really a nomination, it's just informational, so...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We'll accept them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just accept them. I wrote that. And the second is I have a late-arriving, one application and a quick interview today, impromptu. I'll nominate Ginger Doll as your Northwood School Board Secretary. At a rate of $24 an hour, the board increased that to 20 to 25, and we agreed on 24 today, so I'd like you to present that nomination.
All right.
Do we make a...
No.
That one you move.
Yeah.
So, moved?
Very good.
It's like you said it perfectly, do I have to repeat it?
It'd be nice to have Ginger here.
Yeah.
And she, I know...
We have a highly qualified typer over here.
As much as I enjoy, no. I think Mrs. Doll will be a consistent addition. She has asked questions about her role in the Budget Committee, and it informed her probably best for her to abstain from that section of the budget. When the Budget Committee goes to approve section by section...
Oh, when she...
School Board section, right? Just like Mrs. CoBrown does. We, and she is available, I know that later in the agenda, we're going to talk about a special meeting, and she happens to be available that night, so...
Wonderful. And we're trying to get her laptop, let's have some conversation.
Yeah, Ms. Young's going to find an alternate if we can't pick up the old laptop from the old secretary by then.
Wonderful, well, thank you.
Yes, the administration and myself, thank you. It's a little hard doing both, and so I appreciate Ms. Young, and me at times, and Mr. Alfred, and it...
Amy taken notes once or twice, right?
Just once.
Just once.
Yeah. Wasn't enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't even turned them in, because I needed a new laptop, so they got destroyed, so I'm sorry.
All right. Did we vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we vote?
Did we vote?
Okay, all in favor?
And then, Strategic Planning Checklist, I think last time we gave you the old one, just put it in there, the one that's checked off. We'll visit that at another time. Yeah?
Page 41.
Page 41 is your approval, and I know it says an April 1st deadline. I need to, based on your decision that you're going to make within the next week, I hope, I will file a modification. I've checked with, I knew I could file for a modification, I just double-checked it with Mr. Solomon. He said absolutely. They'll, he interacts with this division quite frequently, so he sees no problem with approving that either. So...
Okay.
Thank you.
And then after that is your Mark checklist, just... The only other thing I have is, tonight I'm going to present you with updated budgets in a few minutes, when we get to that section. It's getting to be close to the time where we need to make some firm decisions, so I can put the budget books together to get to... It's getting to be close to the time where we need to make some firm decisions, so I can put the budget books together to get to the Budget Committee. I have to do that on the 30th. So I'm going to suggest that we have a special meeting Tuesday night, and I think that there's been some discussion, and 4:30 seems to work. Since it is the day before Thanksgiving, I will bring snacks.
It's a Tuesday, you said.
Tuesday, yeah. Yep, Tuesday at 4:30. So if that's okay with the board here, I know the two absent members are okay with this. I will have that meeting posted Monday, 24 hours before, and I will bring some snacks for people during that meeting. And my hope is that-
Pepperoni, what do you want?
Well, I'm taking suggestions till tomorrow, till Saturday, no, Sunday morning when I grocery shop, so email me any suggestions, and let's not go for the lobster. My hope is that we can approve a budget, that we can hash out warrant articles, that we can figure out our nonpublic issues that we had about security, and then get that stuff all codified and in line Tuesday night, and then send me, send everybody on vacation, and then Monday, boom, 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 turn it around and get the things done for the Budget Committee. And then you have a couple of members of the Budget Committee who have volunteered to come in Friday, the 30th, before I distribute the binders, and help go through them and check them before they're presented to the entire committee. So I find that incredibly helpful. And the other thing we need to do on Tuesday is, we have, there's been a change in the default budgeting rules that we've sort of told you about and alluded to. We have created about as much of a default budget as we can right now to bring to the board, so we need an approved budget to finish the default. We'll bring that draft default and have that discussion about the changes and things like that Tuesday. So we really have, you know, three tasks, is to hopefully adopt a budget, to figure out your warrant articles, and to take a look at your default Tuesday night. And that's the only thing I would like to see on the agenda. And I think we can get through it in good measure.
Okay.
So am I posting a meeting? Yes.
I would like you to post a meeting, please.
Definitely.
Tuesday at 4:30.
And would you be able to be here, or you can leave me your budget book, whatever you'd like to do?
I will be here.
Thank you. And you won't have to take minutes.
Extra snacks in it for you.
Lobster.
So that just brings us down to committee reports and old business.
Okay, wonderful.
Page 45.
Yeah, that's after, under old business.
Okay, we're going to do that on old business.
So no new business. Any committee reports?
We had a policy committee tonight, and we went over another four or five policies that we'll be bringing in one more month to the... On data governments and data governance and security, staff concerns and complaints, different policy, a manifest educational hardship. Right over my head, I don't know. Use of school facilities, finishing up. It's just, again, dotting i's and crossing t's. There's really nothing there. And website accessibility agreements. Is that the right one? Or is that, yeah. Okay, so that's what we discussed tonight to bring forward.
I wasn't at the last wellness committee meeting. So I'm no help.
The Budget Committee hasn't met since our last School Board meeting, nor has the COBBS Committee met, and obviously, we don't know from Mr. Wells or Mr. McGuigan, but I'm sure we'll hear next time. Old business. Page 45, budget discussion. I passed out...
New budgets for you? They should be right in front of you.
Was that a default budget you gave us?
No, I gave you a new adjusted budget. You don't get a default until next week.
Oh, all right, I got it up here.
So, and our last budget. There were some questions about the tractor, and that's covered on page 45. That was one of the outstanding issues. And there were some minor adjustments to be made to the budget. Your COBRAUN tuition rates came in this morning at 8:30. I had the business office adjust the budget based on those rate increases. If you remember, I put in a marker, a 5% increase. Your regular ed increase came in at 2.84%, and your special ed increase came in at 2.59%. And those adjustments have been made to your budget, resulting in an increase in your, hold on, let me rephrase that. Resulting in a decrease in your operating budget from last year to this year of now what is just shy of $400,000.
Here, here.
So... My initial calculation of your tax rate, based on revenue estimates that we haven't even been able to estimate, because we only got our adequacy estimate this morning, but based on using this year's revenues, which are relatively, will be relatively static, your tax rate will decrease. And we'll have that information sort of codified for you on Tuesday night. But that's where you're at right now.
It's good news.
And that's, is Solomon give us a definite one? Now, this is kind of your calculations right now, or have they?
So Mr. O'Sullivan made a really nifty, I have to say, calculating spreadsheet for me that figures your valuation, that figures everything, and that figures your revenues, and then I just plug in your budget number, and it gives me a percentage. So... We did that again this afternoon after we adjusted the budget. So it calculates, you know, it's all an estimate, your tax rate, you're, right, it's all an estimate, but-
Which is actually going to fall into next year, that we're talking about on this year's budget.
Correct, correct.
Calculations for next year.
But it calculates all the factors. We just change numbers around based on how the numbers change within your town. And put your budget number in, spits out a percentage for me. It's actually the most helpful tool I've had in my short tenure as your superintendent. I'm not sharing it with anybody, because we're going to patent it, no. But.
All right.
You're... You're looking pretty good. So as far as warrant articles, the one warrant article we probably aren't going to be able to do has to do with your paraprofessionals.
Yeah, but we always have that finalized afterwards, as long as, we can put an estimate on that anyway, if we had to, just to give to the Budget Committee, or you just leave it plain.
Yeah, I think what we need to remember is that, but the Budget Committee can't act on anything they haven't really voted on yet, right? So we want to give them as much information as we voted on, and then explain to them, because I think you have a budget hearing on this, maybe like the first week in January.
Yeah, that's what we usually finalize it.
I would also say that when the new default changes, so the default budget, well, it is a change in presentation and a change in calculation. It still is yours, right? Where the operating budget becomes theirs, right? So I think that when the... Budget Committee has the public hearing that takes the formal vote, that has a public hearing, we'll want to have some board members there, and we'll want to explain that default to them. And as part of their budget binders, I am going to put an illegal opinion about the changes in the default budget, just for their own learning and education, because it's different than it was before. So I think that'll be good.
Okay. We're going to talk budget a lot next Tuesday, so do you guys, anything specifically you want to discuss before we move on?
Mr. Ruth wants to talk about the tractor.
Well, two things, we'll discuss the tractor after. I still look at this budget. I still am not in favor of putting in the increases for those six or seven people we have. I thought we, you know, I'm not convinced. Anyways, if the other four, we'll discuss a Tuesday, but.
So you're talking about, we do a marker for percent increase, like, if I remember, it's like the 3%.
It's in the salaries.
And then it's actually decided based on evaluations and things like that, so. Okay, and we had talked about potentially putting one pool together for all, so it breaks it down, you don't see who gets what raises or things like that.
It almost looks like a guarantee right now when I look at it, and it's in the salary now, so. All right, just my opinion on it.
Can you get me just one page, so I can look real quick for a second?
Go look at page 17 of 25.
Thank you.
Then you would.
Okay, so... One solution here is to change the verbiage in the note. This is reflects up to a.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had discussed that.
Right, right. So... If it's okay with the board, I'm going to change that note for Tuesday.
That's okay with me?
And then we can continue the discussion.
Well, not, well, that's okay with me, but it's not okay with me, because I still think it should be one complete, just one line. It shouldn't be-
Do you want to change it for?
That's again, me.
And then we can bring it up again on Tuesday and figure out what we can-
I can change the notes, that's clear. And then you can continue the discussion.
Yeah, okay.
And the other thing that I did do, we did do it this last time, is that course reimbursement kind of thing I split out. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Of the salary?
Yeah, in the note.
Yeah.
In the note.
Yeah.
Making progress.
Thank you. All right, Davey said he had a few things. Do you have a, that was a first thing?
Tractor.
He said he had two things and then the tractor.
Well, it was the tractor. Well, that... No, no, that was, we just got this, and I am trying to think of... Keep going on. I'll have, I'll go over it again with my first one that we had. All my notes are in the first one.
Yeah, we'll talk in depth on Tuesday.
Whatever I would have, really just minor changes. I'm not, you know, I just want to check what we had discussed in the first couple of meetings, that is one.
So let me give you a tool to assist you with that. I can find it. There are the original questions with the answers that I distributed last time. You can line those three things up and go to town.
I have my copy from last one. It's from, it's, it was in the last.
I would suggest that you line the original budget, the budget that I just presented you, and that document up, and then generate questions for Tuesday night.
Well, as I'm looking at this, have we found any, apparently, we haven't brought it before, it's a crossing guide?
We still have the sign up, we still have the add up, and we actually-
It's on this bid, so it made me think of it.
It's been put in the paper, too.
Yeah, let me just go over again, so Tuesday will be, these are minor changes that we have.
Yep.
I just happened to see that one early.
Yep.
All right. Do you want to discuss the tractor?
Yeah, I guess we're going to give them a figure, we're going to, we'll have to make a final decision with five of us, but we're going to probably put it in the budget, not on a warrant article.
I think you already have it in the budget.
Yeah, it's going to put it in the budget.
You have it in there. But there were some questions, so.
Yeah, yeah. We'll go up the bid for probably more than one company, would, I imagine, would get similar, I mean, there's just not one brand, we'd get a couple of different bids on it. Where it's going to roughly be coming close to $25,000 by the time we figure things out, 20 to 25,000, I would think. I mean, this seems low. And I guess more information as far as what size is this tractor, what size Huspower tractor do we have down there now? We have in a piece of equipment that fits on the back that I assumed is a spreader of salt and or sand. And we got on this bid, maybe, and it's cheap, 800 bucks, I guess, little, you know. So I don't know, maybe we got one already. Does it work? Would it fit on the new one?
No, sir, they don't speak the same language. The tractors are a different size. And Mr. Tom did not feel that the spreader would work on the new tractor.
Well, 800 bucks isn't a big expense, I mean, considering 18,000 or 20,000. But normally, all three-point, those type of things usually fit on different, because they're, they attach to a three-point hitch, but, okay, fine. And he did put in somewhere, we just made a suggestion maybe about a snow blower on it. So once we go out to bid exactly what we want, size and everything else, this, this gives me a total of asking for something. I just would like more information about what it is we're getting. Because those questions will be asked.
Well, we don't know exactly what we're getting, so this, this is an estimate based on what Brentwood Power Equipment recommended, based on what we currently have. It's a little bit bigger.
This new one is bigger?
A little bit, yes.
Good, all right.
Did you say you didn't know if it had a snow blower?
Well, he, 31, he put in for a snow blower attachment. And I, again, little things like, is that mounted in the back? Is it mounted in the front? I imagine they mount in the back, and you still have your bucket in the front. I don't know. Just, and my other question was, you know, what about a forklift for it? You can get forks for it. I noticed in the tractor, when we made our trip around the building, that there was a pallet of copy paper in that room, which probably shouldn't be there, but anyway. I mean, do we, do we lug 50 cases one at a time up the stairs to bring to the room, or do we have a fork truck, or two forks?
A fork truck wouldn't help us get it upstairs.
No, but you could pick it up there and you walk around the front.
Exactly.
The elevator might.
No, no, just, these are just things that I'm, if we're buying a piece of equipment, and I am fall buying a piece of equipment.
Mr. Ruth, it's 33 horsepower.
33, okay.
I'm looking on the Brentwood Power.
I'm just, things that I'm like, okay, do we need it? Maybe we don't even need it, so it's fine.
So our facilities manager, Mr. Sarris, who's been doing this for a long time, these are the attachments he recommended. We added the snow blower at your request. But, you know, I wanted to defer to Mr. Tom on what he thinks that we need it for, so these are the attachments he identified as being necessary.
And I guess I would say, when you get it, you want to know how much that, the bucket will lift. That's why I'm talking about forks, because they just kind of snap on the, they kind of fit on the bucket, so you can lift up things. And those type of machines maybe don't lift over 500 or 600 pounds. I don't know what machine it is, but. I happen to have a small one, and it will only lift about 500, so it probably wouldn't lift that pallet of paper. But if it's something that would be a help, and they're only $400 or $500, then that's all.
I will make the suggestion.
My suggestion is, put in everything you think you would really use, and then we can kind of discuss the final cost, I guess. Even the snow blower, like I said, maybe it, I'm saying, do you need one? 3100 bucks, maybe it'd be a good one. We just spent $400, put some snow blowers in a lawnmower, I guess. So that's all, I'm just throwing these out, just, we're going to buy it, and they will probably, knowing this town, there's usually more questions than I bring up, with people with more knowledge than me about the equipment. So just trying to get all our ducks in a row to be.
Ms. Young, can you identify the line for me?
And a replacement equipment in the...
Towards the back, it probably, page.
I got it, I got it.
And when you get it, tell us, so we can-
It's on page 20.
20, okay.
Line 263.
Okay, 263.
238.
All right.
Page 20.
Replacement of equipment, 263.
Oh, okay.
See, 261, 262, 263?
Okay.
The notes right there.
And replacement of tractor, 238, okay, because I thought I saw a higher figure. This one here, we got is 18.6.
You got to have a number to bid off of, right?
Yeah, we want even if it's a little bit bigger.
Well, and I explained the additions to that, so cost of steel is going up. The snow blower was not included on here.
Okay.
So that's why, yeah, it's higher than what you see on there.
Go ahead.
When, when the town purchased a backhoe, they also included in that a, selling the one that they had on hand, or are there any plans to sell?
Good, thank you.
Do you know, are there any plans, what we're going to do with the tractor that we already have, or?
I believe we have a policy that governs how we dispose of things, so we would have to refer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Is it diesel or gas?
Diesel.
Okay, good.
And if you, if you-
That was good.
It really doesn't matter much.
Better than where's the light switch to turn the parking lights on.
That one stumped me.
Oh, did we have a guy- Oh, did we ever get that? We didn't have the last meeting, okay. Old business, okay. I, I got something for old business after we finish.
Um, you can, this, this bid that's out there has the exact model of the tractor, so it's, it's pretty easy to find all the information about it.
Okay.
So just sharing.
So we'll, we'll make that final, that we definitely putting it in, and we'll leave it in the budget, and we want, then we'll go out to bid.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll decide that on Tuesday for sure, but, yeah.
Okay, good.
Great. Anything else for budget for tonight?
Nope, not for me.
Okay, and, um, parking lot items. Okay, so we'll just go down the list, um, the school board newsletter.
You'll get that when you get the minutes.
All right. Tractor, we just discussed. Uh, school safety, we, we've been talking ongoing. Um, common, the two presentations coming up in March. We had some conversation uh, this evening around curriculum director. Um, blizzard bags in April, so, and then calendar discussion in December. Anything there?
I can give you a little update on the calendars. I've got Cobrown's, uh, calendar, and I'll be blasting those out to the three buildings in the three districts, and asking for the calendar committees to assemble in Northwood, um, and take a look at that. I know there's some desire on the board to have some of our PD days aligned, not only for staff, but for families. Um, so when we schedule that meeting, we'll have that discussion and, um, go from there.
Yeah, and, um, Mr. Wells, if I remember, mentioned that last night to, um, to the headmaster and-
He did.
At the meeting.
Yes, he did, yep. And headmaster and I have been talking.
Wonderful.
So, actually, um, headmaster asked for me, um, to take a look at his calendar and offer some ideas, and we did that together. Um, it's nice to see the collaboration between Cobrown and the SAU right now. Um, it's been improving since we started five years ago.
Yes.
And, um, I think we're in a really good spot, um, as far as collaboration and discussion. One of the things I wanted to share last night is that we meet monthly, the three administrators from the three districts, the assistant principals, the curriculum director, and headmaster and his staff, and, and council. And I don't think I've really shared that. Um, but it gives us an opportunity, um, to have discussions about bridges. One of the things I didn't bring up last night is that, um, the building administrators do, um, remind their staff of the importance of bridges and the importance of attendance. Um, and so we are working together towards a common goal. So, I know that has nothing to do with calendar, but it certainly has to do with collaboration.
Yeah.
Um, school board timeline?
Budget and budget, so.
I think we got that covered.
Yeah.
All right.
We still on old business?
Yeah, any other old business, Mr. Ruth?
Yeah. Not that you mention it. You were, you weren't here.
I know, but the estimate, estimate for the light timer, I have an estimate, is $0.00. It has been done for a few weeks. The company just came and switched it out.
Okay.
Oh, nice.
Good, thank you. That was a big discussion. You guys weren't here. So, thanks.
That's the solution.
Did we get the bill for it yet?
Um, any other old business?
Come here, look at me when you say old business.
I'm looking at you for the business habit. Um, future agenda items, so we're, we already kind of discussed Tuesday's meeting.
Yeah, so next agenda, we're going to do budget.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to do default, do warrants, and we're going to talk about the security presentation.
Okay.
Can you read that list one more time?
We also need to talk about the SRO presentation.
Okay.
Because that will be our last.
Yeah, it'll be our last meeting before the SRO.
All right. So budget, default, warrant, security, discussion, SRO presentation. You got it? Jocelyn?
I'll say.
Did we, um-
Yeah.
Was, last I remember from, um, the SRO presentation, it was in Mr. Burns' hands, who's going to change a few things. Has that come back?
Um, I haven't had a chance to email him yet. There were just a few minor things that needed to be updated on the PowerPoint, and I communicated with him. He only sent me a PDF, so I would have just changed them myself, but, um-
Could you just email him again?
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. No worries. They were minor, so.
Yeah, it would be good, because I'm not going to be there tomorrow after work.
Okay. And then maybe if it, if it's possible to have that updated by Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep, email first thing.
Okay.
Um, okay, we have, um, uh, future meetings, so we, we've scheduled one for next Tuesday. What is that, the 21st?
20.
The 20th, thank you. Um, at 4:30. Um, and then after that, we, there's a joint board meeting on November 26.
Yep, and then there's another one on December 10 that I'm going to have.
Okay.
How about our SRO meeting, is that?
The 29.
Yeah.
That should be in, I think, and the next, but first budget meeting.
Yeah, number 20, November 29th is in here.
Yep. Uh, then December 6, we have a regular board meeting.
December 10, they have a joint board, and December 8. You have Budget Committee?
Yeah, 8. And then whatever the next week is, what is it, like 12 and 13 or something?
They actually-
Couple days scheduled, but we may or may not have to be there.
Budget Committee's meeting on the 1st for the town, and then the 8th.
For us.
Let me see, I'll check. The 8th for the school.
And then there's two snow days, a, a two finish up days.
There's a follow-up on that following Tuesday.
Budget night?
If needed.
Saturday, the 8th, and then after that, it'll be the Tuesday, Wednesday.
So, um, yeah, the Budget Committee's meeting on December 1st for the town. They have a, a potential work session on the 3rd, that's also for the town. Um, and then again, on the 5th, if needed. Um, then the Budget Committee's meeting for the school budget on the 8th, uh, 9:00 AM. Um, and then there's a potential work session on that Wednesday, the 12th, and that's all I have in my calendar for immediately. There's more in January, but-
Yeah, there's a, your public hearing is like this January 6 or something, something like that?
Um, yeah, public hearing is, uh, Wednesday, the 9th.
Wednesday, the 9th.
Oh, no, that's for the town, and then Thursday, the 10th, is a public hearing for the school, sorry. And there are a few other work sessions in there if needed, but-
Yeah, so on December, on January 10. It's a off-cycle meeting for you.
Okay. Um, any other meeting dates, any, anything else? All right, take up, closing public comment. Still good, okay.
Somebody wake up Beth.
It's a great time of year, isn't it?
Um-
No need for non-public?
No need for non-public. So, um, I'll take some motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll say.
Great, all in favor?